Well, we would like to welcome you to our meeting. It is Thursday, September eighteen. We will get the-
Recording in progress.
We will get the video going. The recording is already in progress, so.
Right, right. I planted two for some reason, so.
So tonight in our work meeting, we wanted to talk about oversized structures. You know, that was on our agenda at our last meeting, but we felt like that we needed some more time to talk about that. So, we are going to, Malcolm has some information on that. Planning Commission had reviewed this, had some recommendations that they passed up to us, and so then.
So this is different than what we saw last week?
It is not.
Oh, it is not?
No, this is the same that we saw last meeting. It was just when we were talking about it, because in our last meeting, we talked about if we wanted the attorney to draft an ordinance for, but some of these, you know, people felt like they really didn't have a chance to have reviewed this. And so, they wanted to, we wanted to go over it with you again. So, Malcolm, do you wanna just kinda go through it, then as we talk about this, we can see what?
Yeah, we can jump into it a little. Probably don't have to worry a ton about, I mean, we have those ordinancees there, but they're just our existing ones, with just some red lines of what the changes would be if we adopted what was recommended. So just to summarize in the high level, we first started off with just, the idea was just to talk about what we're seeing. So these are the averages of sizes we're seeing for the two different zones for oversized structures. Thirty-six hundred in an R one and two thousand in an R two. The idea was that, you know, we don't ever reject them at the planning level. Sometimes there's conditions, but I think I've only seen one or two, and they're normally not related to size. They're just more related to random things that get brought up that the resident has an issue. And so we thought, rather than fill all of them, that it might make sense to increase the allowed size. And then, we can approve them at the, you know, staff level, as opposed to making them get a conditional use for each one. So that was the discussion. The recommendation was to make the changes to be this size. I had to know, Morgan. Thanks. Here we are. So, increasing, you see R two before, I have the prior one on there for you, I just updated it. R two would increase to where you could go to twenty-five hundred. R three-quarter could go to three thousand, and R one could go to five thousand. So, that was the recommendation. They also had a recommendation for accessory dwelling units that we could talk about a little bit, but it was really allowing the living space to increase from nine sixty to half of the allowed size for the accessory structure. So, the idea was we're approving them either way, and the accessory structure, or the ADU, or accessory dwelling unit piece, was that it would help with our moderate income housing strategies. So that was really our discussion. Do you guys have interest?
Clarify that a little bit. How it would help with our, how it would help with that?
Yeah, one of our strategies has been accessory dwelling units, so we report on them. They wanna know how many we have. We do a pretty good job of keeping track through minutes and also through MyCityInspect. So we would, in theory, it should incentivize more people, right, if they can do a little bit, or a bigger living space. And we should be able to have more applications accepted and then report more. In addition, I guess the idea would be it shows that we're trying to promote them here in town, but that would just accomplish that strategy more so, 'cause that's been our strategy identified.
Just to make them bigger, you think there'll be more applications?
I think so, but I guess it doesn't guarantee it, but I think it would incentivize people. We don't get a ton, a ton of pushback about nine sixty, but I think people would definitely go bigger. They could. But, uh, do you guys have interest? I guess let's just take them one at a time. So oversized structures. Do you guys have some interest in increasing oversized structures and working on that recommendation? I can pull up our existing real quick, what you guys are talking about.
We really haven't noticed any really being turned down when they come in. So that's what we thought. If they changed this, then there wouldn't have to be so many people in applying for a conditional use permit for one. Sometimes I think there's been certain, there might be something that Planning Commission has to make sure that they meet all the, you know, they have everything in order, but I don't know that there's necessarily, if they have everything in order. I don't think there's ever, I shouldn't say ever, very frequently, they're not turned down.
So are you counting on the building permit to catch any, like, easement in, intrusions and that kinda thing? Is that, is that gonna be your mechanism?
Yeah, well, and I would still review them all, just like I do before I send them, but I would review them all. And yeah, we'd have the building permit as a safety net for easements. They did mention, and this is a separate topic, so we can stand on it, but for the, they'll still want a CUP for anything bigger than that, a conditional use. For accessory structures, they still, or ADU, sorry, they still want a conditional use permit, so they'll at all go through anyways if we adopt what they want. These are our current ones.
So a question with that, then, just as you said that, so if it was an oversized structure, but it had an ADU within it, then it would still go to Planning Commission?
Yeah.
The only ones that wouldn't would be if it was just strictly, like at Pole Barn, and they were going to use it for storage.
Yeah. These are our current ones. You can go two thousand in an R one, eighteen hundred and sixteen hundred, so.
So say they build a five thousand square foot shop.
Yeah.
And two years later, they wanna put an ADU in it. So they would come back for just the building permit or a conditional use permit?
Conditional use, yeah. So that went from two thousand, that eighteen hundred to that, and fifteen hundred? Yeah, fifteen hundred for that one. Or sixteen, sorry. To give some perspective, not the, you can lean everything from other cities. I don't think that's what you wanna always do, but most cities are doing twenty-five percent of the rear yard maximum for accessory structures, not just wanting any. And then once you hit twenty-five percent of your rear yard, you're done, no more. That's how they do it. But you can imagine, like, a forty-three thousand square foot home, or lot, right? One acre, forty-three, five sixty or whatever, you'd be, what would that be? Four thousand, eight thousand, you know what I mean? An acre lot could go up to, like, twelve thousand before, mostly cities even cut them off. So that's what, like Plain City, Far West, couple of the others, West Point, that's how they do it. We talked about that with Planning Commission. They want, they didn't wanna set a hard and fast cutoff where, once you hit twenty-five percent, or probably ten thousand for, like, a half acre or something. They, well, I guess a little less than that, probably like six or seven for a half, but they didn't wanna do a hard cutoff. They wanted to have the autonomy to still consider it for conditional use. If it was for, I don't know, you know, a riding arena or something like that, a thing that was bigger.
So does this have any impact on the amount of surface has to be permeable, you know? You know, forty percent, it had, it used to be forty percent, so where, where are we today?
I think our current impervious surface ratio is sixty-five. Does that sound right, Morgan? And it wouldn't change that. They'd still have to adhere to it, but, yeah, that would be something Nate, Nate always checks that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they couldn't go above sixty-five percent on impervious surface, so this would count.
That's covered with something, right? Sixty-five percent, so thirty, thirty-five percent is, has to be permeable.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with, with that. I think, like, the only, there was a couple concerns I had that maybe we could add to this that we talked about last time, was number one, the off-street parking. So if we allow this to happen, you know, it could significantly, you know, impact more parking. So as long as they provide enough off-street parking to facilitate that new structure or that new dwelling, um, I think, I think that should be important, especially for our guys when they plow the roads and mail carriers and safety and all that, you know, fire trucks getting in and out. And then the other thing, I know there was an issue that came up that the very smallest lots, I guess, wouldn't qualify. According to that ratio, they could only go up to, was it four hundred?
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Yeah, 'cause these ones, they didn't recommend an increase.
So I think they should probably stay the same, the nine sixty, as long as they, you know, can adhere to the same criteria as the others. I think they should be able to stay the same.
So we're doing a minimum of four eighty-four, whatever a minimum is?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, and a maximum of nine sixty or fifty percent of the allowed use, whichever is greater? If that makes sense?
Yeah. And then the other thing I, I think we oughta put in there is the dwelling needs to be on a fixed structure. 'Cause I could see somebody, like, these tiny homes are real popular. I'm not against them.
They pull it in on wheels?
They pull it out on wheels and, you know, and hook up to the sewer, and, uh, I can see that being a problem. So whatever the dwelling is, no, no matter the size, needs to be on a fixed foundation, fixed structure. And it could be the manufactured home, and they just pour the foundation walls and bring it in two pieces.
We could add, we could add that, for sure.
What about cinder block?
Oh, cinder.
With trailer homes, it's not a fixed structure, but they do it all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, everyone's trying to beat the system some way, but yeah, that's a point, too.
Well, just permanent founda-, I don't know what, what you, how you describe it, but a permanent foundation? I don't know if you'd consider cinder block permanent or not. Kinda kick it out, crazy.
A permanent foundation that meets ICs or the codes.
It was gonna be state code.
The state code.
On foundations, yeah. I can have Nate torment advise on that and just have him, you know, make it the same we would for a home, essentially. Whatever we have to do to control that, the foundation wise. With parking, we currently require, we actually probably need to do an update, and we can look at it. I don't see anything for a primary structure. We require, if you look in our code, we require a two-car garage for a duplex, which Nate's just been applying across the board, 'cause it doesn't actually spell it out anywhere else that I've noticed either. So for sake of moving on, we, us, we'll look at that, but let's say it's a two-car garage requirement, which probably implies, right, two stars, there's stalls in the garage and probably inherently two more likely just behind it, but either way. With our accessory attached or detached, we require one additional for either. Most cities require one, two. We haven't been enforced, well, I haven't, as newer to me, I haven't been following up on that. I probably need to. And then, well, I will. And then the other one thing to mention is some cities are requiring two additional for detached. I didn't see anyone requiring two for an attached or an internal.
So you're saying a garage or just a s- space?
Just a space.
Okay.
Yeah, and they'll call out, like, a, you know, they'll call out the surface material, like, it can't just be, they want asphalt or the road base type, you know, solid surface. Let's either call that as concrete or asphalt, I think, generally. You know, most of them, our lot require two. Everyone requires one, like we do. Some require two for detached, so. Right now, we're at one. Do you think that's enough? I mean, it'd be one for an internal and one for a detached, and then probably, you know, a two-car garage for a home.
So ours right now says parking a minimum of a two-car garage is required for each dwelling unit. And we talked about that a little bit last time, that is that something we even want to look at? Because if this is for each dwelling unit, based on this, you'd have to have a, a two-car garage for the house, and then a two-car garage for the-
Well, this one right here, this is co- It's that, I don't know, if it's from code, this goes under duplex ordinance, and it tagged into this. So this is very duplexes. So, I think they just spelled it out for duplexes specifically, 'cause they don't want anyone to get rid of the garage requirement for a duplex. So that's why they spelled it out, but it's not spelled out anywhere else. So we. Do you guys think one's enough, or do you guys want two for a detached?
God, it depends. If, if, you know, you get a little nine sixty, one's probably sufficient. But if you go above the nine sixty, maybe it should be two.
Yeah.
Maybe the nine sixty's one, and above that is two?
Gotcha.
I, I, I don't know.
Based on the square footage.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them do that in their table. It'll have a square footage calculation. We could do that. I could figure that out and bring something back that shows that this amount of square footage, you would be at one. Then anything over, like, zero to a thousand square feet, maybe you're at one, and then a thousand and above, you're two or something.
Couple of things I had, I brought up last time, which was on our first page, which says proof of occupancy must be provided to city annually. And we didn't really decide how that was going to be done. It was suggested that maybe they have to come in and apply for a business license, and then every year, when they renew that, then that shows, because, you know, the occupancy was, the owner has to live in at least one of them. You know, they can't rent them both out. But we probably need to decide what we want to do with that, 'cause right now, it just says proof of occupancy must be provided. But we've never created a form for that, and so we're, we, currently, we aren't doing that. But if it says here that we are going to have to, then either we take that out and we're not going to, or if we're going to, we need to have something, then a method of us being able to do that. So I, I don't know, and I, I don't know if on City Inspect, there's a way. And then I think if we did a business license, I, I don't know that we necessarily want to charge people every year to come in, but if they had to just come in and fill that out, at least, then, you know, that was suggested, which was a good suggestion, and at least we could keep track.
Could the mill help with that at all? Proof of occupancy or not, really?
Depends if people are honest, you know? They could fill out a form and say, "I, if they're honest, anybody could fill it out for them and not be honest."
Well, I know when we did this, too, we talked about there might be instances, like, it could be military service. Someone could be on an LDS mission, that there might be a period of time when they armed in either one, and we were going to have a form that they could come in and fill out at the city, but I, I, I know we haven't ever done that.
How long are their conditional use permits valid for? Just one year? I guess we could do a better job of following, like, 'cause they should, in theory, you know, they sign that, and they sign that. They should only be valid for a year to begin with.
They have a year to start.
We don't, I mean, full transparency, we don't follow up. We don't, like, I've never gone through, and, like, these ones are expired. I'm sure Morgan doesn't hurt free time, though. But we could be better at following up. Or if there are neighbor complaints, we keep those. Obviously, we have them filed well, and we would know. They're just expired. They have to come in and renew, but.
What if, what if you just kept a database, and then January one, you, well, 'cause you couldn't, you'd, you'd have to take a snapshot in time, 'cause everyone's gonna be different. You send, you have that database, you send them out a notification, and just come in and do it for free. But if you don't do it within sixty days, then you gotta pay twenty-five bucks, 'cause it's gonna take your time and, you know?
Well, 'cause we have, then they're, they will be charged with a misdemeanor. But we don't really have anything in our
Yeah.
code enforcing that with a misdemeanor. So, a- again, this, these probably aren't bad words, but if we're going to have them in here, then we should do it. You know, there's no sense staying in there if we're, if we never really ever going to.
So where it says the city may also require proof of occupancy at any point in time. What if you just did a spot, every, randomly, randomly, you just said, "Okay, here's thirty-eight years," and you just randomly select five of them for proof of occupancy?
That's not a bad idea. Who's, who's gonna do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ADU.
The Planning Commission.
Corporal for sure.
Oh, yeah. We'll get us a new code enforcement.
I know, public works.
But I, I, it might be, because business licenses, you do every year. And so the first year, like you said, you know, Bryce, everyone would be at a different time. But maybe after that original year, maybe every January, they're notified like a business license, and just said, "You need to come in and fill this out."
We currently don't have anything in our code for rental properties. I have a bunch of people, like businesses, that'll say, "Do you have anything in your code that requires us to run out this house?" I've never done anything, so that's something we could create. I don't know, put them tracking sources behind it, but then that can be part of the tracking system and the documentation.
Well, the other thing is, is they're not necessarily all rentals. They may be parents or children living next door. You know, they're renting it to the family, most likely.
Most ordinances I shifted through today, the, for rentals for ADUs and DAUs, they mostly wanting them, they'll have code that says you can't rent them for less than thirty days, just because of short-term rental issues. So I see that often, where they can't, if they're gonna rent one in their house or on the back of their house, it has to be over a thirty-day contract.
So you don't have the Airbnb stuff. So we, we don't have an Airbnb, or a, we don't have that in our city, do we? Or a code for it, I think so.
Just that language right there.
Just that, okay.
One thing that it came up to is, do we want their ADU to be bigger than their home? Because based on some of those, and maybe that doesn't matter, but that's something we probably need to look at. If it is something we think, I, I don't know that that matters, but that could happen.
I, I thought about that as well, like, someone builds a, they have a two thousand square foot house, and they're on two acres, and they build a five thousand square foot shop and put twenty-five hundred. But maybe their intent is to, to live in that one and rent the home. I, as, as I thought about it, I don't think it matters, you know? I think it, it kinda muddies it a little bit if we, you know, limit the size. 'Cause the owner's gonna be living on the property.
I don't think it matters.
So how can you be taken advantage of? I don't think they could take advantage of the city, whether they live in a bigger
Yeah.
ADU than the house or not.
Well, they're gonna pay more taxes, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
In a bigger house.
Only other question with that, then, is the way that it got recommended, and it might not have been the intention by Planning Commission, I'm not stating that, it's just the reality of how it will be is, if we allow them to, so these are the proposed, you know, five thousand and an R ones, the proposed max. But they also, we're okay with them getting a conditional use for something bigger. So we either need to explicitly say, you know, the maximum living space is fifty percent of the allowed size? You get what I mean? 'Cause if they got a conditional use for, like, uh, ten thousand, or you know what I mean? They could technically get a real, you know what I'm saying? So you wanna cap it, that the max is here, do you care if they got a conditional use for something bigger? I mean, it would be conditional, so they'd have to come here, but they could do a pretty big ADU that way, too.
I don't know, maybe just cap it, and then if that situation arises, take a look at it again.
Very few applicants sold that size.
I mean, if some, yeah.
Another thing, too, that I, I brought up last time, that just said, again, this is at the bottom. Any exception of the owner occupancy must be approved by the Planning Commission? So do you want people to have to come and get that approved, and again, they'll be charged with a misdemeanor? So that would be, for example, like we talked about, if somebody came in and they were going to military service, and they were going to be deployed for six months, do you want them to have to come to the Planning Commission to get that approved to be able to do that, or is that just something they can do in the city, uh, office?
I think the application, I think misdemeanor is a little bit.
I think so, too, and I think they could just turn the office.
The fine is one thing, but a misdemeanor is entirely different, so we don't need to be charging people crap away for stuff like this.
I, I think maybe if we state some of those criterias, like military service, uh, mission.
Humanitarian.
Whatever it is, and then, and if they fall under those categories, they can just come into the city and say, "Apply for this one." And if there's some unique thing, then I, I guess they could petition the Planning Commission, but maybe try to avoid that if we can.
And then, it had talked, too, about how it had to be behind, and I know last time, we talked about, do we want to have it be that it could be on a side yard? 'Cause you know how some people have it wide, and they might not have deep enough to be able to have it behind? So I don't, I don't know if that's something-
I mean, I didn't, I was kinda the one that kinda spearheaded that, and the, the thought process was, is so, you've got a line of homes. I just took my street, for an example. And everybody could put a house probably on, or an ADU on their s- street, and if they put it right at the same level, you know, setback as the home, it just looks like a great big subdivision. I, I think it should be back a little bit.
Yeah.
May, maybe not, maybe we could change it from the back of the house. Maybe it's ten, fifteen feet back from the front. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that could be looked at, but that's the thought process behind that, so it just doesn't look like a bunch of, you know, high-density housing.
Yeah. I agree.
And I know, I know some people disagreed with me, but that's okay.
I, I think it should be behind the front, but I don't know necessarily if they don't have, if they have a wide yard. I think it could be a little bit behind the front, like you said, Bryce, maybe if we set ten or fifteen feet behind the front, whatever you thought was, would work, and, 'cause if you have to have it clear behind the back, they're, they might have a long, wide yard and not as deep.
Yeah, my mom's got a real wide yard, but it's not very deep, so.
So she had to put it behind her house, it probably would've worked.
Yeah, she wouldn't be able to put one behind her house.
At least halfway behind the front, just to go.
It's up there forty feet deep, and it gotta be twenty. Yeah.
Or maybe that could also be, I mean, they're going to have to come for a conditional use, too. I guess if they wanted it, but, well, it's hard to get variance and stuff, so it's probably easier just to set it.
At half the depth of the existing home? I mean, that sounds, it'd be easy to figure out, you know?
Explain that to me one more time, so if the home's set back forty feet.
Go ahead, Ryan.
The home's set back forty feet, and-
So it would be a minimum fifty percent setback of the existing structure.
So it's not the-
From, from, from the existing structure.
Yeah.
Not talking friendly.
The house.
We're talking the house.
Yeah, the house. Right. We gave you change of the house, the house is thirty feet deep.
Fifteen.
You can go, yeah, you can go fifteen foot to the front of it, or up to the front. In the middle, you're gonna be in the middle in that case, yeah.
Yeah, in the middle.
Is that what you meant?
Yes.
I thought you meant, like, if the house is twenty feet width, then this has to be back ten feet of that.
Yeah, that's a wrong, yeah.
Isn't that what you meant?
Yeah, I explained it funny. I'm on the same page, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's just an idea.
Ooh, it sounded good.
Seems to work. It keeps, it keeps them mine, as we give them, we'll then come up with a little.
The whole point of some of these ideas in the first place, like the size and everything, is so that you couldn't come along and try to sell off
Yeah.
part of your lot with a house on it, like, and cities have done that. You know, they have ADUs, as long as they keep them there for two years, then they can sell it off as a, as a, a di- a different home.
Right.
And this would just, because if that's the case, you may as well just put-
Change all the zoning.
Correct, lots.
Yeah, exactly, so, I think that's a practical thing to do.
Okay. Well, I can put some work into that, if you guys are all in agreeance that you like the general recommendation with these changes, we can button it up and probably, we're probably at the, you know, it's an option to vote. You guys can vote, obviously, however, but I'll, I'd need probably before, obviously, till the next time, to get it right back in front of you. This is what your feedback was, this is how I would implement it, and then Reed could draft it and make sure, you know, or our new attorneys could draft it and make sure it is, you know, correctly put in.
So we're just voting on the draft tonight, correct?
Yeah.
So can I ask one more question while on this, um, the fee schedule? Last time it said we were voting on it, today, is that gonna take place? It said last time it would be voted on, or motioned on on September eighteenth, and it's now on the action items this time.
This?
No, the fee schedule.
Oh, yeah, so the fee schedule, we talked about it last time, but I didn't know that we'd ever came up with something that we were going to, and then when we talked to Reed, he said we need to have something pretty concrete before we voted on it, so, yeah. But it would be good to get that all buttoned up, too, so by next time, then we could, could actually have a first.
With, with that, um, you guys say get rid of the misdemeanor, just define, could we go ahead and define the fine in the fee schedule? Is that okay? Sure, but it's on there, you can vote it, okay. I'll try and define a fine that feels proportionate to our other fines, that way it's more actionable. We did get our, we met with, uh, Weaver County, or the Alan from Weaver County does our, uh, enforcement of our ordinances. He sent us three violations that were defineds, which isn't like something you celebrate over, but at least it means they're following up, so. That was reassuring, cause we have a few complaints, so it sounds like their process is a little more dialed in now and they sent us these three that need to go to fines. So I think it's important we get that fine schedule nailed down, so then we can actually get some changes on some of these complaints.
Did we talk about internal ADUs last time? I can't remember if we did or not. No?
I don't think so.
So I found out a little bit of information about them, so internal ADUs, we know we have a lot of people in Hooper that have basement apartments that probably are not reporting them to us. Um, I checked with Nate as far as what you have to do for that, and of course, you know, they're, they can be grandfathered in, so they wouldn't necessarily have to have a per se building permit, it's like not like somebody would have to go back and say, you can't have your basement apartment if they've had one. But there were some specific things they would have to make sure they did, for example, there has to be a way for them to get out. So like a walkout basement or at least a doorway that they could get out in case of a fire. Um, he said they, they used to be able to make him change the size of the windows, they can't anymore. So if when the windows were, if that was built and that was the size of it, he said they really pretty much came down and said they're just grandfathered in. So they're, you know, if they want to do that permit, if we just came up with something for them to go. But then there's also then that is turned over to the county and then they are classified as a duplex. Anyway, by the time I caught the county and we really figured it, I don't, I don't know that it's worth it. I don't know that we would have enough people that would ever come and tell us that I don't, for me anyway, when I was reading through all of this and I thought, I don't know that we'd have enough that would come and wanna tell us that it would be worth us going through all the work of developing something to put it out to people to say, come tell us you have a basement apartment. I don't, I don't know if people would or not.
Most they said, you tell us.
Only the weed counted is with moderate income housing is the only thing.
Yeah.
So there's no advantage to the homeowner whatsoever?
No, no advantage to, you know, sometimes you.
Well, I, I think there could be an advantage if a fire is started down in the basement and you're readying it out.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure your insurance company has to insure that if you had someone living there il- illegally, basically, you know?
So it depends on your insurance, because I called to check on that as well, because we have missionaries that live in our basement. So when they moved into our basement, I called to see what they would have to do, and no, we didn't have to pay anymore, there wasn't anything. They said if they started the fire, we would still be covered, but that was only our, so I can't say that for every insurance company.
But do you, do you rent out your basement?
So we have missionaries that live there.
I mean, but you, you rent it out, I mean, you rent it out?
Well, they don't pay us, is that what you mean? But but I asked them that, I said, you know, what would be the difference? And they said, no, as long as the homeowner is in a certain percentage of the home, it is still covered even if the fire was started on the, on the, in the basement.
For a rent or for a.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Well, that's.
And and at first too, because it used to be, there were some really pretty strict requirements, there was like a, and it was really matter to, a matter of like a two-by-six that you had to put in your, in the floor joists, that would be separating the basement and the upstairs. And Nate said they don't even require any of that anymore. So it, but but some places, for example, I know like Ogden City, if they're going to rent out a basement, well, I, I can't say this now, but this is how it used to be. But you actually had to do, it was like a good neighbors program, there was an actual course you had to take in order for you to say, but then it is listed as a duplex. And then if they ever sold their house and it's worth more, if you say it's a duplex. But also you turn that in, it's a duplex into the county, and of course, they're paying more taxes. That I, I, I don't, I mean, whatever you would want to do, but by the time I was done, cause I was thinking, man, that might be a way we could count more units for our.
Well, we talked about that part a few years ago, that there's a lot of people that are renting out basements, it's like an ADU and we should have record of providing afford, that should be part of our affordable housing. It should be.
Yeah.
The only good thing.
So it's a way to count for that.
I could see as far as a safety thing goes, as if it was listed as a duplex and something happened there, um, EMS and fire and everybody would know that there were people in the body. You know, I mean, that's the only thing that I can see that would be a bonus for anybody, but other, other than that, it really doesn't make, make, make it worth your while, it seems.
Yeah, well.
Pretty sure state law, you can't prohibit IADUs, but you can regulate them. I don't know how much they care anymore, I'd have to look at that report. I'm not saying that's right, but I think they almost have just tried to make them required to be allowed. I don't even know if they really give us a lot of credit for them anymore, where they still do.
Maybe that's it, maybe that's it right there, they don't wanna give us a lot of credit as an affordable housing.
Yeah, cause they really, they really did just make it requirement forever, and you have to let IADUs happen, you can regulate them.
So.
Yeah.
You can regulate, but I know you can't just say no more of them. So now they really, I know the ADU, the detached ones, that was reported and they wanted to know, but that's cause you can still stop those if you don't like them. Like, you know, Harry still doesn't have any, but.
Surprisingly, a lot of cities don't, you know, Hooper, you were really progressive when you were planning that, because I've been surprised how few cities do not have ADUs. Like, there's only, and that's a big thing that they're going to be talking about now next year in the legislature is about ADUs, cause a lot of the, I'm talking about detached ADUs. So I don't know on the internal, by the time I was done, I thought, yeah, this isn't worth it, you know, I don't know that anybody would come. There's really wasn't a huge benefit to have some, someone go to all that work to do it and.
Was there anything else, I want to leave you guys a minute, I can get this put in the structure and present it at the next meeting.
Just talking about this. Yes.
Make sure that everything you mentioned is the way you anticipated.
So we will plan on then at the next city council meeting, if you're all right with that, we could have this on as a motion item to approve this. And then we will instruct, I'm sure by then it will be our new attorney to, you know, get the ordinance all drafted, so. We can be ready to approve that. Anything else you could see and?
Well, you guys can all live in the back of your kids' homes now, congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
That may happen.
Kids are gonna take your homes over and, you guys just get a little little thing in the back.
I know, I asked Blake if he'd build me a little place in the back of his house.
Cussing.
I don't know, that's, we're still in negotiations.
Yeah, still up in the air, huh?
Any reports from any meetings you've been to at all that you want to?
Um, the, with the sheriff's department, they're just, um, they've just been real busy. And, um, they were happy to help us at Tomato Days and I thank them for their, for their help here and stuff. And they said they thought it went real well and, and, um, they've, they've been, they've been out on a lot of SWAT calls and a lot of really dangerous things lately, so it's getting more dangerous by the, by the week. So that's, that was kind of not a real great thing to hear, but that's, that's what's been going on with them.
I was trying to see if I could find the date really quick, but the county has called a meeting with the mayor's and the sheriff's department to talk about the budget for the sheriff's department, because they are always in the deficit as far as, you know, the money they need to secure their officers. But, oh yes, it's right here, it's on Monday, this coming Monday at one o'clock, and so I can report back. I know it's with the county commissioners and the mayors, even the cities that do not contract with the sheriff's department are invited to come to this because they're talking, well, because they still use some of their services, you know, they still are using the jail and, you know, everything else, so.
Right.
Um, one interesting meeting we went to with UDOT, just a little bit.
Well, I just had a con, on that, if you meet with them, I think it's real important that, you know, cause in the past, they've always divided our contract into two parts, based on the calls and based on the population. And at one time, they just had it fifty-fifty, you know, if you're based on that, you're fifty percent calls, fifty percent population. But really, when you, when you stop to consider that, a place like Hooper where our population's really pretty high compared to most cities, but the amount of calls we have out here are, is really low compared to smaller cities. We end up subsidizing cities that have a lot more crime and a lot less people. And I think that's just something you ought to really watch for and, you know, there was a time, you know, my, my opinion was it should always be on the calls. You just pay on the crime that's happening in your city, you know, and, but, uh.
What's our ratio now, sixty-fourty?
I think it's sixty-fourty.
It's sixty-fourty.
Sixty, sixty percent population.
So we, we almost had it, yeah, we almost had it at thirty-seventy and then we was just almost there.
I was gonna say, yeah.
And then we just had a few cities that said, we can't afford it then, we can't afford to do that, cause their crime's too high, so.
Well, I know the cities have said to the, the county, they feel like the county should be contributing more. So I think that's why this meeting, cause we have those regular meetings like you're talking about and they go throughout the budget. This is the first time we've had one where they've asked us to come meet with the commissioners. So because at all these meetings, they've said they felt like the county should be contributing more.
Yeah, see, they, they never, they want the mayor's to decide, because ob- obviously if you're, have more crime and less population, you're gonna adjust that accordingly. They, I don't think the commissioners ever have wanted to be saddled with that responsibility. So it'll be good to have them involved in that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I would even say push for at least five percent more, tr- push for sixty-five, thirty-five.
Yeah, well, what, sure.
Well, push for anything that benefits us because of our call volume is so low, push for something better than we got now, you know?
Sure.
And the commission, or the county should put in more money than they are, I mean, they, uh, as far as I know, they're, they're not really a large contributing factor to the sheriff's department, and they need more money to keep their forces intact and, and well-trained, you know? Cause according to them, they lose a lot of people to other cities.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, I was saying we went to a meeting and they talked about, it was with UDOT about SR one seventy-seven, so just a little bit of update on it. So they are in the stage of the environmental study and it will be done by the, the environmental study from eighteen hundred north and west, point two four thousand south in Hooper. So that environmental study will be done by the end of next year, um.
It actually starts the fall of twenty-five, I just got my letter.
Fourteenth, fourteenth.
Yeah, well, the environmental study they've already been working on, but they said it'll be done by the end of next year.
The letter that we got said, said this was to advise us that people would be coming in our yard, but they wouldn't start until the fall of twenty-five and they would finish by the end of twenty-six.
Yeah.
And so we could have twelve-inch by twenty-four-inch holes in our yard. It was like, okay.
So they said, um, as soon as that's done, and they did show us up on the map and it is fifty-one hundred, which we already knew. They leave, they give a really wide, because they don't, haven't a hundred percent determined if it's going to be the east and the west, other than they have been purchasing a lot of land along the east side. They said once the environmental study's done, then they will continue to buy more land, they will, um, start the infrastructure as far as moving the utilities. They said the soonest that they would start construction would be three to four years, they're estimating four to five before that construction will be started on that phase, and there will be an off-ramp at fifty-five hundred south and four thousand south.
Did, um, they say anything about what area of housing was gonna be notified of that? Because I, I was just wondering, because just the people on my road, there aren't that many people, and if they just let us know, because it's gonna impact people to the east of me as well.
So I, I went up after and asked him, cause I said, okay, so you say the environmental study is going to be done, but then you're in the planning, but what does that mean? And he said, by the time the environmental study's done, we will know exactly where the road's going to go forward. So I, I don't know that they will let you know until the end of next year.
Yeah.
But they, they did say there was going to be a meeting in November at Rocky Mountain, and then they will be starting to meet regularly with the cities to start going through things, talking about infrastructure, what things need to be moved. So I, I think it's, it's, we'll be here very, you know, construction, I'll start.
Yeah, okay, I, I just wanted our neighbors to be informed, you know, as well, or if they were just going to strictly do an environmental study on our street.
Yeah.
That just doesn't seem like that makes sense.
It, it's a pretty, so it's, it's a pretty wide area they have, right now it's two hundred and fifty feet wide what they need. It is going to be a divided highway, and so they say they have to have two hundred and fifty feet. And then if they do the frontage road along the side, which they talked about, but they, I mean, they won't say for sure yet, but they show this big white swath that is on both sides of fifty-one, but they haven't really said which side it's going to go. And I asked them specifically too, I said, okay, what about, so I said, you know, we're a little bit unique out here in Hooper. I mean, no more so than other cities, but I said, you have fifty-five, then you have fifty-three, then you have fifty-one, then you have forty-eight, you have forty-six. And they said, well, it's less expensive, the more that they have it on the ground, the more that it has to be raised, it's more expensive. But it's a quarter of a mile on both sides of the on-ramp and off-ramp that it takes for that on-ramp and off-ramp.
How many miles?
A quarter of a mile.
Oh, that's awesome.
So you figure if it's from fifty-five, it's gonna take fifty-three to even get that going down. But they said some of those roads might be dead-ended, they, they don't know right yet, but by the end of next year they will. Then every bit of that will be known.
Okay.
See, I thought Taylor said they were gonna decide who won off-ramp in Hooper, because that's one point nine mile, two, fifty-five hundred to four thousand. And you just said a quarter mile on each direction, that leaves literally just over a mile between the next exit.
Yep. Yeah, right, and they told us that the meeting both fifty-five and forty-two.
That makes no sense, that's.
So you mentioned that we may have to move stuff, if we do, they pay for it, right?
Like utilities are moving, oh yeah, yeah, that's all part of the project, like if they're moving water lines or sewer lines.
Yeah, they would, okay.
They said that's what they would, they would start with the infrastructure, those things as soon as the environmental studies. So, I don't know, it'll be, yeah.
And nothing past four thousand, right, they have not, not a word past four thousand stopped.
Not, not right. Not yet, they, they don't, so they've already awarded the contractor to do the environmental impact study for that distance, you know, the eighteen hundred to the four thousand.
What you just talked about, yeah.
But they haven't yet, so that's who was giving us a lot of the information was the contractor.
Yeah.
But they came and met with us probably, I don't know, it's been quite a few months ago to say, you know, they were, who was bidding out.
Yeah, they basically said they'll have free rein in our yard, in our, on our property. So they'll just come dig a hole and, they said they'd fill them up by the end.
If it's that close to beginning construction, why are we talking about improving the intersection of fifty-one hundred and four thousand with West Haven? I mean, that's.
That's gonna be gone.
It's gonna be gone, you know, it'd be there three or four years and we tear it all up again. I mean, why dump our money into a.
Or, or even that sewer line they've been talking about, if it's.
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah, well, fifty-one hundred probably will still maintain as a frontage road, so that road would still be there. The road might be to the east of that.
Fifty-one hundred would be a frontage road, so this is gonna be on either the west or east side of that?
Fifty-one hundred west. Probably.
Quarter ways though.
Wow.
Two hundred and fifty feet is what it'll take, but they'll probably leave fifty-one hundred as a frontage, but again, that's.
When they talked to us initially, they said they would put a berm between the frontage road and the freeway is what they were thinking, a sound barrier type thing.
And Brian, our, our sewer pipe ends at four thousand.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't continue on now. Okay, well, thank you, we'll be back for our regular meeting.
Sorry, okay, okay.
My lady just had to dig out.
I know, I'm gonna check, actually, in case.
Yeah, I can carry that up for you, I'll carry that up for you.
Huh? Oh, thank you.
Recording in progress. We would like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting tonight for Hooper City. I am Mayor Sherri Bingham and I will be conducting this meeting. We are going to go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Fowers and then a reverence by Councilmember Hill.
Everyone please stand and be down for me. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear kind heavenly father, we're grateful to be gathered together tonight as a city council, as a community, we're grateful for all the blessings that the house has bestowed upon us and we're thankful for the circumstances which we live in, which are favorable. We're thankful for the good people who surround us and the neighbors and friends we have that we live with and we ask the blessing upon all of us that we may be much older, protected and guided and directed in our thoughts, in our actions and the choices that we make each day. We are mindful of the, um, events that have taken place in the last several weeks in our, in our state and our community and we pray for stability and peace and harmony to prevail, that we can be able to participate in, um, giving back a peaceful and a, um, thoughtful way of communicating with each other and living with each other. We pray for, um, calm heads and, and, uh, strong arms to lead us through, um, the times that will surely come. We ask for, uh, civility as we talk about these things tonight on our agenda, pray for, um, uh, peace and harmony to prevail in our community and our lives, we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Just wanted to make you aware of a couple of upcoming events. Next Wednesday, September twenty-fourth at five o'clock here in this building, Stephanie Russell, who is the Weaver County Economic Development Director, is going to do a community presentation on CRAs. CRAs are the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I know there's been a lot of questions asked about this, we've seen a lot of this posted, and so we thought this would be really good to have a community presentation. You can come and ask questions and she's bringing someone else from the county with her to give us information on those. So that's next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth at five o'clock here in this room right here. And then the other thing coming up is we have the Halloween Haunt, which is going to be Saturday, October eleventh. That is down at Hooper Park and that is from six-thirty until nine o'clock. It's a lot of fun, if you've been to the Halloween Haunt or not, you need to come and it's really a good community activity. The next thing on our agenda will be public comments. If anyone has a comment to make, if you would like to come up to the podium, please state your name, you have three minutes. You can watch for, our city recorder will let you know when your time is set and we'll turn the time now to anyone that would like to come up and make a comment.
My name's Rick Wells and I came before this body about two months ago about my neighbors and their Sanford and Son situation that they've created. I've talked to the compliance people with Weaver County, they went in, they talked to them. He cleaned up the place for about two weeks. And it, it's been an ongoing issue for like the last nine years. I mentioned this before, Mike Fisher, talked to him years ago, like eight, nine years ago, ex-mayor Corey Green went over there, inspected it, went and talked to him and said, this is not acceptable for Hooper, according to their ordinances. Okay, um, Councilman Wilcox has been over, not once, but twice, to look at the situation and he was in agree, in agreement. Okay? He's got five or six unlicensed vehicles right now, back there, that I could see. If you drive by on fifty-five hundred, it, the front of the house looks nice, shrubbery, green grass, house looks nice, but it's, once you go to the back, he set up five or six Conexes, shipping containers back there, I talked to the compliance people about that, they said, well, I wonder if he got a land use permit to do that, nobody knows. Last time I talked to the compliance people, they said, well, everything's fine. Well, it's not fine. I know you guys pay them to take care of everything and make this quick. He has a chicken coop, he was told by Mike Fisher years ago to move it, he was out of compliance. They told him to move it, the compliance people this last time, he said, I'm not moving it because my neighbor's horses are too close to the fence. Well, we have, we share a fence on the east side. His horses are on one side, mine are on the other. So if mine are too close to the fence, his are obviously too close to the fence. Okay, I checked the ordinance of Hooper, I'm sure the city council set it up, a chicken coop has to be a minimum of five foot from the fence unless there's an easement, then it has to be ten. He's built that right on top of an easement. My question to you is, I know you contract through the compliance Weaver County, can you guys come look and if you're in agreement, why can't you guys send them a letter yourselves? Say, these are, this is unacceptable, you need to do this, this, and this. Your cooperation would be appreciated and if not, we're gonna take it a next step further. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments tonight? Okay, seeing no other comments then, we're going to move on. The first thing we have then is the approval of the minutes dated August twenty-first. Council, have you had time to review the minutes? Did anyone see any corrections or maybe changes?
I do have one thing. I, in our, in our minutes from last meeting, I can't, this, I agree. In our minutes from last meeting, um, I had brought up, um, the fact that we didn't follow procedure in our August seventh meeting, um, that there was three items on the agenda that were neither approved, denied, or tabled. Um, and I didn't see that discussion or those comments in the minutes for tonight. And so, um, just wondered why they weren't there. All we had is grammatical corrections in our minutes tonight and that, um, comment I had talked about last time is not in here at all.
Okay, we can have.
Jamie does the minutes and I, and I'll get everything worked fixed, so I'll just get with her, make sure things are updated and we can just, you just carry them.
So I, I mean, I, I would like that, that comment on public record, so my motion is to table the motion, or to make the motion to table the minutes for, um, last meeting till we get the correction.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we had a motion made by Councilmember Hill, a second made by Councilmember Fowers. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get that corrected and have those ready to be approved at the next meeting. Okay, so the next thing we have is a, um, presentation that we're going to have by Dave Harris, who is our emergency preparedness specialist, so we will turn the time over to you and thank you for coming. And hopefully everybody saw our really nice, real emergency preparedness trailer down at Hooper Tomato Days.
Do you want the next one? No, no. So I wanna give a little bit of a status of where we are, what we've done. Uh, so I may ask you to come back to this agenda a few times, but, um, if you can go to the next slide. So this is just a sample of our agenda that when we meet and, uh, we met last night, that happens to be, um, the previous month. But you can see, we have, um, those sub teams, uh, marketing cert, which is community response, voad, which is, I forget what it is, uh, volunteer organization, something or other. But it is, voad is where, if, as a city, if we deem we need help that's beyond our reach, there are many organizations that specialize in whatever it may be, and it's on, from a recovery perspective. So Cheryl manages that, she's been to some meetings trying to get us aware and how we will deploy that, uh, emergency plan. Oh, I'd like to, we have four of our team members back here, Annika, Monica, and Brian and Casey. So they're, they're here to support. So, uh, Annika's working on the plan and we'll talk about that, but it is, uh, not that it really matters to you what it looks like right here, but we spent, uh, she's been working on that and then last night, we spent some time, um, going through that, trying to, to make it appropriate for us without being a working document that has some validity that we go back to. And then, uh, Brian has the emergency response trailer and then I wanna talk a little bit about the fire, but anyway, you go to the next slide. So there's, nope. The trailer, one back, there we go. So we are, uh, you know, we have a trailer, if you saw it at the, the park, um, I don't think, did it have the writing on it? Yeah, 'cause that's pretty recent. Uh, incidentally, we need a place to put it. Right now, it sits behind Diane Sorenson's house and has been there since we bought it. We'd like to have it in an enclosure. Simply, you think about any fire department, every piece of emergency equipment is in a building, it's not sitting out in the parking lot. Uh, I think this one should be as well. So there may be a bay over here that we could commandeer and that could be parked in, there's a lot of questions about access to it, 'cause we can't just have one person that can get to it, 'cause if that one person isn't available, it just doesn't make sense. So it needs to be there, but how we make it accessible is something we would do. So we go next slide? So that is some, through the, let me pop down just a couple, that one, and then we'll go back. So this is a list and it's actually, uh, the terminology is a mass casualty trailer, but we don't wanna trailer running around Hooper that says mass casualty. So that's why we call it emergency response. But this is what needs to be in it and it's gonna take us a while to get that collected in it and in there. Right now, we're working on, shall we go back one? So this was, the state has decided, or did decide, that they were gonna do PPE. And so through the county, I had, I went through the list and said, can we get this to county now, I'm gonna pick it up, there's things that aren't PPE in here, useful to us, some of, we have five thousand gallons we'll never use, but a lot of it is very useful for us, it helps us get a little bit of that list that you saw just a minute ago. And that is in the trailer. We don't have any racking yet, we need to do racking. So a couple of things I'd like tonight is how we go about getting the racking and then as we start to populate or fill that trailer. If there's an amount that says we can go spend without coming to get permission, or how we do that, that we are ready to, to start putting the racks in and we're gonna make them fully adjustable so that we can accommodate whatever is in there. So I don't know if you can tell me right now, or if that has to be something that is a follow-up, how we go about spending money.
So you do already have that money in the budget that has been designated for you? With our procurement policy, if it's ever anything over five thousand, it needs to come to the, if it's not in the budget, but even if it is in the budget, we like to have that brought to city council to be approved? So it depends, I'm, I'm not that familiar with how much racking would cost.
I think we, I think we'd easily, five, not the, the list, can you go back to the long list? That is there, that could easily take us over five, but I don't see us, it's gonna take us a while to get it. Because we're really, like the trailer, incidentally, um, the guy gave us two thousand dollars off. Our ambition is to be as frugal with that money as we can, so if we look for opportunities through the county or other cities that we can join in and purchase to save some money, this is gonna take some. I don't see a five thousand dollar spend at any given time. This may be ten, this may be fifteen, but it may take us a year to spend that. So four under five?
So what you're asking, so, 'cause I know you wanna buy racking right now.
Yep.
So is the process, they just go purchase it and turn in a receipt to you, Morgan? And then hopefully they get paid quick?
Well, and if you know where the racking's coming from, I can order it through the city stuff, that way it's not, you're not spending your money and then we're trying to get a check, so just, you know, where we can get it.
So that, that would be great, 'cause at least we can do maybe eighty percent of it and once it starts to outfit, there's gonna be some that's, oh, we need this bracket, we need this. So, uh, we'll, we'll approach it from that perspective, just to say, it'll be like a Home Depot, we're gonna go buy the Unisfer or somebody, so I don't know where he's getting that.
And also we would have, that you would not pay sales tax if it's purchased through the city, because cities do not pay, so that would be beneficial, would be a savings to you too, so yes, get with Morgan.
Oh, incidentally, is it, is the trailer licensed or whatever we have to do? Do we get plates or what do we have to do?
Uh, yeah, there's, I'll give it to Jamie, she's over in Old Fleet stuff, so I'll bring her.
Okay. 'Cause we don't, it hasn't gone anywhere, but, um, we don't have anything on the backend that says it's. Can you go back?
Before, before I lose my train of thought, so as far as parking it, I, can you find out if there's room in the tower building? 'Cause I know there's, there was at one time and I know there might be some other things in there that could be out in the weather, but I, I agree with you, especially with red, it needs to be.
And from my perspective, that's, that's, we have to.
I agree.
We don't wanna put an emergency vehicle out in the, the weather and then rely on it because, whatever, you know, we, the sun eats up a tire or whatever may happen, I don't know. So you'll let us know?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll reach out.
Okay, can you go back?
Go back.
To the, yeah, right, keep, I'll right back to the gym, I just wanna make sure. Oh, this, so there, you can go back to that slide. So, um, I think in July, uh, the county is using Everbridge and it's this, uh, high velocity, this critical event management, you can see right there, that's just a slide from their homepage. And if you remember, I came to the working meeting and said, I can't do it because it has to be an employee. You said somebody would come, nobody came, I went there, we're not part of this. As far as I know, the county's flipping the bill for that, um, but this is what the county's doing, it makes sense to me. It, I don't remember what the one that was before this one, that we should be. It, I don't remember what the one that was before this one, that we should be part of it, but we're not. And I don't even know how now to, to retro, get back into the training and get signed up for it. Now maybe, somebody wants to look at it and say, no, this is not what the city wants to do, I don't know. But from my perspective, this is what we should be doing. So I, I guess I need to make sure there's somebody that's going to come back and tell me what we're doing or not doing in relation to this.
Do you have a contact information of who we should get in?
Right now, I'd go to these, is it?
Schwartz.
Schwartz. I'd go to her, because she's the Director of Emergency Management for the county. And you can just ask her, I mean, I can do it again also, she's not highly responsive to emails, but when I go to the, I go to the county meeting once a month, I can ask about what it would take us to get somebody up to speed. Do you know anything about it?
What's that?
Do you know anything about it, about Everbridge?
Very little.
Okay. It is new, I mean, July was the training, or, I think it was July.
Will you just replace the code?
Yes, there you go, I knew there, I knew to replace one, but I couldn't remember what the other one was. We pop back to the. No, back to the Jennifer's meeting, not that one. Keep going back. So we talked about the money, so our emergency plan, let me just kind of, so, we can leave it there. I just happened to be up in North Ogden after right up that fire, in fact, the choppers were still flying around. And the way they had designated barricaded the streets. If we have something that hits Hooper, we are not prepared to handle it. And I realize that if it's an event that's isolated like that, that emergency county would come in. They would, they would take charge, it wouldn't be us. But the, the position we're in is no one's coming, if it's a big enough issue, and I'm not talking about an isolated one, but if it's a larger area, no one's coming to help. Because it's the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people. We don't have the greatest amount of people. And if it's widespread enough, we may need days before we get somebody. So I, we are not prepared to do something like that if it was widespread. So I want to, I want to be a little critical about, I wonder how many times in your work meeting, emergency preparedness has been a topic? I would guess this many times. So it feels like, and we, as a team last night, we talked about, it feels like we're, I'm going to call this a Hooper Emergency Preparedness Club. We just meet together, we talk about things. But if truly, I represent the city from an emergency manager position, and we as, and I'm pointing back to these four, and there are some others that are core to the group. If we are developing Hooper's plan, we need support. And I know there's a thousand things to do, and I'm not asking for more resources, but I'm asking for attention. You know, Everbridge, we missed it. We're not in the newsletter. I didn't even, you know, I realize it comes up, I didn't think about it, just to, hey, if you want to put something in, here now's the time to get, there's nothing on that board out there. We've had something out there, it's gone. To me, there ought to be a category out there, there's those categories, emergency preparedness should be a category. If we're serious about it as a city, and if indeed, I've been asked to be the emergency manager, we need to step up as a city, and the city needs to be, it can't be just this isolated group that meets once a month and sings kumbaya and talks about the things we want to do or the things we should do. If the city's not behind us, it's futile. And I'll tell you right now, it feels like the city is not behind us. That we're doing our own little thing, independent of the city. And we need, again, I don't, I'm asking, I'm not asking for resources, I'm asking for attention. Not for me, but for the efforts.
So you, you have a marketing person, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Have they reached out to the city that it'd be nice to get like, maybe your own little link or even something on the front page that promotes, you know, your meet, you know, I should say, our meetings?
She does it through Facebook, and we talked last night, she's going to reach out to you, Morgan, trying to. She's relatively new in that role.
Okay, I think she, you know, if you want the city to be, because not everybody's on Facebook, but I do both, you know, let's get it on, let's figure out how to get it on a community page, you know?
So why I'm complaining, I'm, another complaint.
You're good at it.
I think, I think when the website was changed and we had an opportunity, we didn't have to, to do anything about, in a more presentable way about emergency preparedness. That we should be more, it should be accessible, we, all of the things we're trying to do, you know, we have a Google Docs and we have Facebook and all the things we're trying to put out there for the community, we just don't have a mechanism, and it belongs, to me, it belongs on the web, on Hooper City's webpage. Oh yeah, it's, it's, yeah, yeah, it's there, but it's not, if you go to what, and he had a lot of those links, they don't work. He points back to some of their, whoever, points back to some of the state things. That's really all I have, it's just, we just need to have a more involvement from the city in a, in a committed way, and not just that we're a, a club, meeting and doing our own little thing. And think we represent the city.
So really quick, David, on our website under Government, or Community, there is Emergency Preparedness tab, and it does give all of the Google Drive documents. I don't know if you shared it, or if one of your group members shared it. We can add you, like on our main homepage, and there's a few little square boxes a little bit further down, we can add that as a new square box, so people know what's there.
So how do we get, how do we routinely get things out there on that page?
On our website?
Yeah.
Just email me.
And you'll put it up?
And I'll get it on, yeah. I just, I guess I just need more communication.
Because like, for, for quite a while, the upcoming events was months behind. It didn't get updated. So if that's, if that's how we do it, that we send it to you and then we put there.
I'll, I'll also give you our third-party website, Ms. Eno, you can tag us both in. She does live back east, and so she has a little bit of time difference, so just take that into consideration.
So is there any development opportunities on the site?
Yeah, she does it all.
But we can go ahead and say, we want you to do this and this? Do we need to get approval that we want this to happen?
No, I think it's sponsor meets your criteria.
Because somebody has to pay for that, right?
For her time, yes, but I don't, I don't know. If we want the information out there, I think it's worth the money to pay her to do it.
I agree.
That's my.
I agree. But can we do that? Are we authorized to go ahead and contact her and say, we want this, this, and this? And we'll just incrementally go through, we want the access visible and links that work and.
Yeah, the more detailed you are, the better, I hope so, so.
Yeah, so if you'll send that to me, that'd be great?
I'll be budgeted money for that, so if it, you know, if it is more than the rate across. I think what we ought to do, Dave, I know that you were talking about having a CERT specifically for Hooper.
CERT training, you mean?
CERT training, you know, maybe we kick off, and maybe we start promoting that for, I don't know, the first gen. I feel bad because I haven't done the CERT, but I, I couldn't just because it was always on a Thursday night. Maybe we start there, you know, we get 20 to 40 people, you know, sign up for that CERT and, and just kind of try to build some momentum that way. I don't know, has anybody moved forward with that as far as?
So we actually have, how many now?
I.
Eight?
Uh, we have, well, we have more than eight, but because it's not FEMA approved, they will not come out. According to Lisa, they will not come out and do a training here for Hooper, no matter how many people we have. They'll do CPR, they'll do like first aid, but it has to be FEMA certified, so that's why you have to go out to 12th Street and sign up for the classes they offer twice a year. Which we have one coming up, and I have no interest in that training, that's in the fall. So typically, they won't come here and do it, because we're not, it's not FEMA certified.
So we have a flyer that we're going to put out, that we want to go put in public buildings, churches, and that will have a QR code both for the CERT and, what else was the QR code for?
The free one that's online.
No, there were going to have two QRs, one for CERT, anyway, sorry.
The website.
Okay. That we just, that we can make as public as possible under that marketing umbrella.
Maybe rather than do the CERT, maybe we take what they'll give us, they'll do the AED training or CPR, and we go ahead and do that as a community too.
We, we could if we could generate the interest.
Right, yeah.
So what Monica's talking about is CERT, have CERTs online free. We're, we're encouraging that, just go, at least do that. It makes us a little bit better than nothing at all. Because eventually, we would like to have enough CERT people in ARDA, which, no, you may know what it means. And those four know what it means, but with CERT, ARDA is where we can assess both the physical damage and the medical needs. And we have a CERT, certified individual and an ARDA person that go out together and serve that function to assess the needs of the community in a bigger, a big issue.
There are some links there that come up with QR codes that are just the, only two of the trainings.
For CERT?
Uh huh.
Yeah, so Monica's pushing that in a, in a aggressive way, but if nobody responds. And that's, that's not your fault, that's not our fault, it's, we just need exposure.
And it's new, so people don't understand that it's out there.
CERT?
Well, yeah, I mean, a lot of people don't even know that's something that's out there that exists, and so.
So that's part of our marketing, is to make those things generate interest. So we need, that, again, it goes back, we need exposure. We need to get, that's why we have somebody marketing, is to get us out there, to let the community know this is what we're doing. So second half of our meeting is, we, we address the business side of our emergency preparedness. And the second half is a topic, it might be, like we had sanitation, 72-hour kit, long-term storage. We're going to be talking about a mark, which, you don't need to worry about that. But different things that are second half, trying to generate enough interest in the community. Maybe I don't want to be part of developing your plan, but I want to learn about 72-hour or whatever it may be, and they can come participate. But we need that available, so it's out there. So exposure. We just need, and we need you on board with us, or us on board with you, however you want to look at it. So that we can get this, then we'll publish this on the website. But we want to make this as concise as possible, have an appendix that has some issues in, but, not some issues, but some auxiliary information, but this may be seven or eight or nine or 10 pages. Instead of, Bryce gave me one from Charis, South Weaver. It was this thick, I had it for nine months, nobody asked for it, let me know that no one was even using it. We want to make ours usable and aware and available, and not get lost in 5,000 pages. Did I miss anything? They're quiet. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I just appreciate all you, how you've done, Dave. You exceeded everything that we expected by far, and thank your team as well.
I would, let me just, in, in parting, is we really have a solid core group. And, and our, kind of our mantra is, we're just a bunch of volunteers trying to do the best we can. And they have, as you saw, that we've divided up responsibilities, because there's no way, which we all know, there's no way one person could do it. And they have really stepped up, which is evident here tonight. They are, have been critical to the progress we've made, and we have made a lot of progress. But like anything else, it just reveals how much we need to go, how much further we need to go. Thanks.
Thank you, yes, we do appreciate all you do. Okay, the next thing on our agenda then is, we're going to do a budget review by Councilmember Hill.
So keep in mind that our fiscal year starts in July of every year. So we're just two months into our fiscal year, so 16.67% of the year has passed. We'll try and go through this, and truly, this is a work in progress. Kami sent this to me, and she's an accountant, and she understands it, every single line, and I do not. So I'm going to learn as much as I can at the next little bit, but I'll explain the best I can for tonight. So we have five categories that are budgets broken up into general fund, capital projects, sewer, garbage, and stormwater. And so each of those categories are shown here. The first, we've got the general fund, revenues on the left, expenditures on the right. So we want to, at the end of the day, the bottom right-hand number should be close to the amount of time that has passed through the year. So 16.67% should match closely to what we have collected in revenues and what we have spent in expenditures. So you can see 13.5% in revenues and 14.9% in expenditures in our general fund and the categories that go with that. So, and that'll change, that'll go up and down throughout the year, but at the end of the year, we want to be close to our budget, that was said, I'm going to change that, so, next slide. Kami insisted on putting in this cash balance, fund balance slide on every category. And the only one I really understand is this one. The state requires us to have an unassigned fund balance between 5 and 35%. And our unassigned fund balance is 1.163 right now, which is at 20%. If we ever get close to or go over 35%, we're required to take some of that money in our general fund and transfer to the capital projects fund, which will be actually shown in the next slide in capital projects. So one, two, three, four, six lines down, you can see a transfer from general fund. That's actually something we built into our budget, is here to transfer by the end of the year, 429,478. So our revenues and capital project are only about 3% because, if you can see the glaring number there, there are grants. Even though we've been awarded those grants, we haven't collected any money of those grants. The biggest one being the 5,500 project on the south side. And so, once we start collecting that money, that number will come up in our revenues. Expenditures, we're only at 10.2%, we're doing it that way, next slide. Again, cash balance, I promise I'll learn more about this, and why Kami insists on having this on there, but right now, I don't understand it, so, next slide. The sewer fund, so you can see, this is kind of where our revenues and our expenditures come more into fruition. Our revenues are almost exactly how much time has passed, and our expenditures are 20.28%. We had so many repairs and maintenance that needed to be done, kind of on emergency, so that's why it's a little bit higher. Next slide. Again, fund balance should be without the zero on the right bottom number. Oh, you did fix it, mine shows a zero, thank you. 1.1, okay. Garbage, again, 16.8 revenues and 20.9 expenditures. Next slide. Cash balance and a fund balance are garbage. Next slide is the stormwater, 19.4% revenues and 13.8% expenditures. And the final slide is the cash balance and the fund balance in the stormwater. So I, again, promise I'll find out more details on that in the next slide, present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know too, as we're going through this, and this will be really helpful for Ryan to review this with us. Every month, once a month, we're going to do this. And sometimes too, and Kami can explain this and Ryan will as well, that sometimes numbers seem kind of off, but sometimes bills are billed quarterly, sometimes they're not every month. Sometimes revenues come in that are quarterly and not every month, and so sometimes from one month to another, they might not seem exactly right on, but then you'll see by the end of the quarter that they have, so thank you, Ryan, for doing that. Okay, the next thing then we have is discussion on our fee schedule updates. And there were just a couple of pages when I was going through this with Morgan today, because I also like we needed to go through all of it again. But there were just a couple of questions that we had that we didn't know if we were quite ready to vote. to vote on this yet today. So let me just go through the pages of the questions that we really, I didn't feel like we had a hundred percent decided on. I think we went through the parks really good last time. Did anybody have any additional questions on those park? That we've talked about? Anyone? Okay.
Question on that real quick. Did we decide if we're doing rentals on Sundays?
What opposed that?
Or for doing any rentals on Sundays, field rentals?
I think we talked about just residents of.
Residents of Hooper not team by tournaments. I, I don't think we should do team tournaments, but however, if it's a family or a resident Hooper, I think, yeah, we'll get rid of them on Sunday.
Thank you.
That's my thought.
Do you think even if it was a family that wanted to do a tournament, they were in charge of? I think we probably need to make that pretty specific, if we just say we don't want to rent out for team tournaments, because sometimes we find that someone will come in and they are a resident of Hooper. So do you want to just, because that is something that we will then have written into this when we.
I, I would say no, because I think the complaint that I heard also along was just the congestion and the noise, and it bothered some people and it didn't bother others. So I'd probably say no tournaments, but if a family wanted to rent it out, go for it.
Rent it out the park, but not, couldn't, they couldn't come and save for a tournament?
Right.
Like a family sober.
That's just my thought. Dale, you live right by here, so what do you think?
I, I've never experienced where a family has a tournament that would equal what's taking place here on the Sundays this past summer. So I, I agree, if you, I think a family could rent that out. I really can't see a family putting together a tournament, at least from what I've experienced, that would equal what we've had. So that's, that's my input on that. I, I think we could just rent it out to families and exclude tournaments, and I don't think we're going to run into an issue with that.
So then Sunday is going to be a Hooper day, Hooper residents' day, basically. Okay. And then did we decide for sure on the amount to rent out the whole park? We had five hundred and a thousand, and we'd also had seven fifty and fifteen hundred. But I didn't, I had both numbers written down, so I wasn't certain what we had settled on that number. So seven fifty for the whole park for residents and fifteen hundred for a lot? For both, I mean either one, for either park. Well, and I think, and I don't think we've included the rodeo grounds in as the park. Do you want to leave the rodeo grounds? How it's been so far with the rodeo grounds is Saturdays and Sundays, unless if someone specifically has it rented out, for example, for a four-eight show, Sunday's been open ride at the park. We have not rented out the rodeo arena, and if someone came in to rent the whole park, we didn't include the rodeo arena with the park. Okay. Okay? The other thing that we had, I just wanted to verify and make sure, was if you go, it's on page four, and it talks about the zoning code enforcement fines. So one thing we talked about last time is you see that the first notice was no fine, the second notice was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, that we had added in there per day. And then the third notice was the above a hundred and twenty-five plus two hundred and fifty dollars per day. And we've done that, that was for the class B, and also for the class C, and also for the infraction. They had been changed to per day. Well, if, if they've been informed, and I'm, I'm sure that they've been taught to before, stuff, if they've been informed and stuff, I don't see a problem with it, being a daily thing. That puts a little meat to it, teeth to it, not meat, puts a little teeth to it. And maybe we'll have some better results with some of the people that we have that don't comply. That's just a thought for me.
So is that, for example, is that the one that we talked about previously? Is that, does that apply to the example we have?
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know that it would necessarily apply to a, you're talking about the ADUs that we were talking about. Oh, yeah, I would, I would think so, if it was the first notice and then, yeah. And then somewhere in here, what I was going back to, as we talked about earlier, was the ADU. We do, we don't have anything in here built in, you know how we were going through that? But if someone doesn't command out the paperwork saying that they are living in one of the units and renting out the other one, or if they violate that, you know, and it said they would be a misdemeanor, which we didn't feel like that was hardly right, do we want to build in a fine or not at this time? I think we should build in a fine, so otherwise, we'll be going back and putting money in. Do you, do you have a suggestion for that? I don't.
Oh, I, I respect that. My, my thought may be, give it a year and, and see if they comply, and if not, then you guys can revisit it. And, you know, when you get the schedule next year, impose a fine. Kind of give it, I guess, a honeymoon-type phase, just to kind of work it in and see what happens. That might be my thought.
Because so far, we haven't even had them come in, fill out the, even having them fill out the paperwork could be the first step, because we haven't even had them do that. So maybe if we did try that and see, and then if it didn't, you know, we always can revisit this and add something in if it looks like it's being violated, like this.
Would you need, you probably need to put a timeframe in there, because there might be a timeframe where there're no, nobody's living there. They don't want to be in violation, and but that just might be a period of time when someone's not there.
Well, do you know, can you think of anything else then, that needs to be added on to this? If we bring this next time, we can vote on it and get this approved, and we will have a resolution ready to go, that this will be our fee schedule? Any, do you know, anybody has?
What were the, what were the fines we were talking about with Malcolm, you know, were leading? Was that it? That you just talked about? Malcolm said we were going to look at some fines for what he was doing.
I think that was Malcolm, I think you were talking about the ADUs, wasn't it?
Was it the ADU fines?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation?
No.
Takes a while.
We, we find one. What's the, what's the in compliance fine that you made daily? Was it fifty, was the fine you were going to make fifty daily? Where's that one at on the fee schedule, Jerry, do you see it? What category is that one under?
It's on page four, under zoning code enforcement civil fines.
I would imagine it would be pretty close to that.
See, that's what we were changing to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. But is that, do we want to do that, or do we want to just have them fill out the paperwork and then let them see if that works? And maybe if we have, you know, that they need to come in every year and fill out their, I don't, I don't know. I think that would seem too high, to have them pay a hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Per day, yeah. It should be a per occurrence, not a per day, yeah. So, I mean, people are, it's going to get their attention when they have to pay anything. So I'd say per occurrence, whether it's fifty or a hundred, you know, here's what we asked you to do. You didn't do it, now look at your fine.
Maybe we could have the same thing, they could get a warning, and then if they didn't. So the first line, there could be no fee, like we have here, and then fifty dollars, a hundred? Seventy-five in the middle?
We'll start with fifty, because we haven't done it before yet.
Okay. And then I just.
No, no fines, second notice fifty, you want a third notice? Well, some of these typically escalate under. You want it there to be higher? It'll be a hundred and fifty total if they didn't comply?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah. Good.
Okay, anything else? I think last time we, you know, went through, I don't really think there was anything. We talked about not changing the cemetery rates. Anything else? Yes, that is the new sewer impact fee. And some of these are just dependent on what they are, so we were just going to change and have it be the current cost, because it's too hard to keep changing. The one thing we did talk about last time was, and that had to do with the, this was on page five, and it had to do with, had to do with the sewer and then the new pit valve, vacuum sewer connection fee. And that's the one that we put in there, that Jared had said to do ten thousand dollars, and we would keep the receipts, and if it was less, we'll refund, if not, they would pay more. Okay, well, if not, any questions then, we'll have this ready to be voted on next time, and then we can get also a resolution made to approve that fee schedule. Any other comments on that? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next thing, I just want to do a quick discussion on the Open Meetings Act. This is a training that we are supposed to complete every single year. But Morgan, in the past, has sent this out to you, and it is just a, one you can do online. It is through the auditor's office, it's an open and public meeting act training. And we can send that back out to you again, this needs to be done every year. Morgan keeps track of everyone that has completed that. I'm sure you have, and maybe just haven't necessarily given that certificate to Morgan. So if you have done that, would you please get that certificate to her? If you have not, we will send that email out to you. I just redid it again today, just to, I could give you a little more information, and it takes about ten minutes, and it's really good to go through and talk about that as a refresher. Just a reminder to us, sometimes I know that there are residents that might send an email or a text message, and it comes to all of us as part of the Open Meetings Act. If you respond to that, you are violating the Open Meetings Act. And so you need to make sure that if, like I say, an email or a text message comes to each of us, you're more than welcome to respond to that person individually, but do not respond on that same thread, because as soon as, then there are three people, that becomes a quorum, and then we have violated that act. So just a, just a reminder on that. And then get that training done if you haven't done that this year. And like I said, Morgan will get that resented back out to you, but you need to do that every year. Any questions on that at all? Okay. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is, as you are aware, Reed Richards, our attorney, has retired, and Brandon Richards, our other attorney, has been appointed a commission in the position in the judge as, well, not a judge, but commissioner in the court system. And so we put out an RFP, and we received a proposal back. We had last Wednesday an opportunity to ask questions to the attorneys that had submitted the proposal to us, and we have them here with us tonight. We are happy to have Matt Wilkson and Darren Curtis with us. And so I had sent out a cost comparison, because I know at the end of, at that meeting, we kind of wanted to go through and see comparisons, and so I sent that out to you as far as a merit report comparing the costs. They would be our legal counsel as far as our general counsel. We have already secured the services of Brandon Miles to be our prosecutor, and so I, I included that as well. And so tonight, with the advice and consent of the city council, I would like to appoint and award the contract to Matthew Wilkson and Darren Curtis. But we can have a discussion on that first, if anyone has questions, or if you'd like to invite them up to ask them any questions.
I know, one question I asked when you met with the council was, you know, your feeling about ordinances, because there's always a time when, you know, do we really need to follow ordinances? Do we look at those as though they're the law? And if someone's breaking ordinances, do we, do we have to follow up on that? Make sure they come into compliance? And actually, I think, well, either one, yeah, both of you come up. I'd really like to, because I think this is important for our citizens to know that when we are hiring legal counsel, that that's what we're doing. It's to, to keep us on track, to make sure we, we aren't missing the mark over and over. And so that's my, I'd just like you to respond to that. How do you feel about ordinances, you know?
I just feel really short standing in front of Darren, so I'm going to let him respond to this one.
Well, we took an oath to uphold the law, and that's what we're going to do for the city. That ordinances are important, that's why we go through the whole government process. You guys went through the legislative process, that, that people of the city had the opportunity to come and discuss when those ordinances were adopted. And we, that's the whole point of this whole, this whole process that you go through, and we are here to uphold it. Our recommendation is to always follow the code. That's going to be our recommendation when we're, we're dealing with these issues. When it comes to insurance coverage and those kind of things, obviously, following the code is the right thing to do for the city. So that's good, that's where we're going to stand.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, you know, we had, we felt like we had a code violation in the city, and we was hoping that Weber County would support us on that and do something about it. You know, that they would send their code enforcement officer out and inspect it, and it, it never happened. In fact, they haven't been willing to. So as city attorneys, what would you do in a case like that?
One, I would have to look at the, the tools that we have. I would, that's something I deal with all the time, I deal with code enforcement. If our code does not have the tools to have that happen, and so that those things can be taken care of efficiently, then it might be a problem with the code. It might be the way that was written, it might be with the enforcement of that code and, and how that works. And one thing we do have to understand is, there is budget, and the city has to deal with budget, and sometimes taking care of those things is expensive on the front end. But depending on how the code's written, I mean, those expenses, a lot of times, would go to the homeowner to be taken care of that way, so. It, I would have to look at the code specifically to respond to that, but I would want to give as much tools and teeth to the code, so that we can handle that here in-house.
And I'll just add, I'm assuming there's a contract with Weber County with the code enforcement, and so it might be necessary to look at the contract and see that they're fulfilling their obligations in that part as well. As Darren said, though, like, yeah, it really does come down to the code. And you have, a lot of times, you, your code can include taking someone to justice court and abating nuisance or a code enforcement violation there, or you can pursue it just civilly in civil court. There, there are many tools, but it just depends on the code, so.
So that, that makes a lot of sense, you know, maybe sometimes we need to review our codes a little better. I, I would hate to think that because of how much a code costs to enforce, we don't enforce it. I think maybe kind of alluded to that, maybe it's too expensive to enforce a code, and, and that would imply that maybe the code needs to be written a little different. Is it, is that right?
That's what, that's what I was giving at.
Okay.
Because we just need to make sure that that goes to the homeowner or the person that's violating the code, so that we can get that money back. So that's, that's what I was looking. So that's, that's what I was alluding to.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions for them? Okay, if not, then I...
Sorry, in our, in our work meeting the other day, we had talked about Reed Richards being kind of a mentor, well, transition person. Did we decide on the timeframe, how long we want Reed to, retain Reed to help transition these kids?
Well, I think that would be a good part of our motion. It might be retaining him as long as, until we actually receive an official notice that he is leaving us, you know, from him.
Yeah, I think, I think we should allow him to send us a resignation letter, give him that courtesy, you know, help you guys make the transition. Yeah, we'd be paying too, but I don't anticipate it being much of a cost, but he can get you up to speed, he has been here 25 years, so I think that's a good, a good strategy.
I mean, I was thinking 60 to 90 days, maybe, I don't know, what you guys are envisioning, but something reasonable.
We're ready to hit the ground running whenever you're ready to have us, and I'll tell you, I have a great working relationship with Reed, as I stated, and he was a mentor to my, to my dad. He's been a mentor to me as well, and, yeah, we have that great working relationship. I don't see any issues there, but whenever you're ready for us, we're, we're ready to go.
So maybe, like you said, we could leave that up to Reed, to decide when he wants to, because I think, like you said, I think we'd be ready to have you start as soon as we have the contract signed, and then, because Reed has been agreeable to work with them, and we could leave that up to Reed for as long as he felt like, and it might not necessarily be a day-to-day thing, or maybe it might just still, for a while, you call and say, hey, I have a question or something with that. With that then, is there someone that would like to make the motion to award the contract?
I, I'll try to word the motion correctly, to award the contract to, we do that by your names, Darren Curtis and Matt Wilson, or Wilson &amp; Wilson, P L L C?
Yes, yeah, it'd be Wilson &amp; Wilson, P L L C.
Award the contract to Wilson &amp; Wilson, P L L C, with part of that motion being we retain Reed Richards until such time that he notifies us that he's, he's done with us. However, you would want to award that.
Okay, so Reed's had a motion made by Councilmember Fowers, is there a second?
All second.
Second made by Councilmember Marigoni, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, welcome to Hooper, we hope you'll enjoy it here, I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so the next thing we have then is approval to draft the amendment of HCC 10-2B-6 for oversized structures. We had a discussion about this at our last meeting, we talked about it in our work meeting. So what we need to do is, someone needs to make a motion to have this amendment, a motion for them to draft the amendment, and we will see that again at our next meeting, and then we would actually vote on the oversized structure amendment, but we needed to have approval to even draft that amendment.
I would make the motion to approval to draft the amendment of HCC 10-2B-6 for oversized structures.
The motion was made by Councilmember Wilcox, is there a second?
All second.
Second is made by Councilmember Hill, any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one then is approval of ordinance number 202504, and again, we had this last time. We had Taylor Stoffer come and present this, you, in your packet, you should have received this ordinance that has to do with the SWIP. If you remember, we were, we are in the process of an audit, and this was one of the things that we had to do, was have this ordinance. So hopefully, everyone has had a chance to look through this ordinance. Is there, and then we can discuss this, if anybody has any questions on this ordinance? Does anybody have any questions on this ordinance at all?
No, I just, I was just gonna make a comment, that sometimes as much as we hate to have to get things so specific when it comes to storm water, I know this is something that we, hasn't been addressed in a long time, and based on our audit, we probably need to tighten things up to prevent having any types of problem with that audit, any findings like they, like they found this last round, so. I think it's important to update this.
Yes, and we have, that was one of the findings in the audit, was that we did not have an ordinance that specifically did update our storm water. So if there's not any questions then, if someone would like to make the motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance of number 2025-04, ordinance updating the storm water ordinance of Hooper City.
The motion was made by Councilmember Wilcox, is there a second?
All second.
Second made by Councilmember Fowers, any discussion on the motion? Because this is an ordinance, we are going to do this by roll call vote. Councilmember Wilcox?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on the agenda then is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Marigoni, is there a second?
All second.
Second made by Councilmember Fowers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is adjourned. Thank you for coming.